Good afternoon. It's four o'clock and we will call to order the June 8, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting. I would first ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
With that, would all that are able please stand for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we will move into proclamations.
Excuse me. Item 3.1. The month of June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, in the city of Salina, Courtney Train, youth advocate mentor with DBACK, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. I am actually not Courtney Train. She had an emergency, so I'm taking over for her. My name is Abby Hunter and I am the victim, domestic violence victim advocate for D-VAC. Okay. Elder Abuse Awareness Month, June 2020, whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in 10 seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation, and neglect. Whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men and are usually family members, caregivers, health care workers, or other trusted individuals. And because of the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help that they need. Whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated $2.6 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior for another's benefit. Whereas too often elder abuse threatens the livelihoods of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases the risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. Whereas Salina's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. Whereas we all have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending elder abuse by assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now therefore, the city of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Salina, and urges all citizens to work together to help protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Thank you. Are there any events planned this month?
We do. So even though we're pretty limited due to social distancing, we are still doing our best as D-VAC advocates to educate the community. Typically, we would meet in the library, but we're trying to do presentations online that are open to anybody, free of charge. We have one currently planned for World Elder Abuse Day, and that is Monday, June 15, from 1:00 to 2:00. And you can access that, it'll be a Zoom presentation, and you can access that by going to Eventbrite, our Facebook page, or the Salina Journal Calendar. And we'll also be, you know, if you like and follow D-VAC on Facebook, we will be doing live presentations, trying to update the community about how our services are still available but look a little bit different with quarantine, so.
Thank you very much. Abby, I have a proclamation here for you.
Appreciate you being here and thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
With that, we will move into the citizens' forum. This is an opportunity for individuals who would like to address the commission that's on a topic that's not on the agenda, and we please ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. And please state your name when you approach the podium.
Thank you. Joan Ratslove, Salina. Good to see everybody here. But the reason that I'm here is because I have a complaint about how the planning commission was conducted on Tuesday. There was a public hearing, and there were technical issues. We felt like there were some other issues too, but I just want to comment on the technical That was June 2 of 2020 for the Lowell Rezone. We appreciate trying to carry on business by available means, but it wasn't working Tuesday. I participated in city commission virtual meetings, and they seemed to work pretty well. But in this case, staff and commissioners could not be understood via speakerphone. So if you were, you know, so the callers in could be heard on speakerphone, but callers commented on the problem to the staff and commission that they could not hear staff and commissioners during the hearing. As you know, you can watch online and you can hear fine, but there's a lag. So if you're participating, you can't rely on the audio you get from the video, or from the, you know, from online. So the speakerphone audio was not okay for those trying to participate, and this is not just a regular meeting, it was a hearing. And as the city commission found, you know, I said that no one can rely on better audio online. And if the public is unable to either see or hear, and you can't see if you're on speakerphone because, well, at least I can't, then it doesn't meet the requirements of an open meeting. In addition, I was recognized twice, but not every time I pressed star nine. Some were never recognized after pressing star nine. So if anyone wishing to participate is unable to do so, then it doesn't meet the requirements of a public hearing. Many people said that they experienced those problems. And so Salina City Ordinance Section 42-24(c) states that any interested person or party may appear and be heard at the hearing, and specifically referring to rezoning hearings in person. So that's in our ordinance. And I tried to see if a resolution had been passed by the governing body that would somehow equate remote meetings with in-person, and I didn't find that. So I guess what I'm asking is for the city commission to take a look at that situation and consider, I don't know what you would call it, nullifying the hearing because it didn't meet requirements.
Thank you for your comments. I know city staff is looking into that, and we've received some emails concerning that, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Can you hear me? I don't know.
You can pull that down.
Can I pull it down? Okay.
Either that or grow real fast.
I know, right? My name is Jericho Johnson. I live here in Salina. A lot of things, I know my time's going. As a black woman, a mother, and the bias just has to stop. I know a lot of people probably can look at me and probably might be like, oh, she might just work whatever, you know, at some random place. But I've been an educator for almost eight years, and black lives need to matter a lot more. We have to stop the bias, the accusations that blacks are criminals, because they're not. And I'm not saying, and I think this is a perfect post, I saw it on social media this morning, that we're not saying, we're not trying to say all lives don't matter, because they do. But the ones that are in danger are black lives. And like I said, as a mother, I worry about my three children growing up. My son is 11, my daughter is nine, and I have another son who's six. On the way here, I had to explain to my daughter what I was doing. Worst feeling as a parent ever. So I'm just here to say that I believe black lives should matter a lot more to everyone. That's it. Thank you, commissioners, for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mayor Hoppick, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
May I ask a question really quickly? We had talked about, or I think it was your city manager's report, or one of the email, emails that you sent, you had mentioned that Deputy Chief Morton would be here to talk about how the protests went and some conversations that we've had. Is that going to occur under other business? So if these folks would like to stay and participate, that they could engage in that conversation? Or is that something that's going to happen now? I just want to know when that's going to occur, you know, with the...
Right. The email that I sent, my stated intention related to the eight can't wait question.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And so we anticipate there might be comments about that, and those are eight specific policies that are recommended by that organization.
Right.
So Deputy Chief Morton and I and staff have reviewed our policies relative to the eight can't wait, and I asked him to be here if any specific questions came up about that. What I can tell you is that in the intervening time, Chief Nelson called me this afternoon and indicated that KWCH is covering the eight can't wait question, and has indicated to him that in their research, Salina and Overland Park are the only two communities they could find in Kansas that actually addressed the eight policies that are recommended by eight can't wait. So with respect to ongoing dialogue, yes, we're trying to reach out, make contact, and trying to organize a conversation, but not necessarily anticipating that that would be at that level today in this meeting.
Okay, because I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood. I thought that Deputy Chief Morton was going to be here to speak about that, so I downloaded the eight can't wait and tried to at least gain a little knowledge so that I understand, understood what they are, you know, what's problematic for law enforcement officers, what, you know, what are the most important ones to make sure that we've implemented? And you'd indicated that out of the eight, I think we have implemented six, which is a start.
Right. It actually turns out we've addressed all eight. The two that were of concern were the way that they were worded with eight can't wait compared to our approach. And Deputy Chief is here and prepared to speak. I wasn't anticipating to kind of preemptively have him do that as much as respond to any questions or concerns that might arise.
Okay. Well, speaking for myself, I think it would be wonderful if we're not prepared to, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot.
He is prepared.
But, you know, whether that conversation occurs at this level here today, or if we do it in the future, I just want to be transparent so that people know when they will be able to ask questions, make remarks, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to be clear, if that's going to happen today under other business, then it would behoove us to encourage everyone to stay for other business. If it's not going to occur at all, then to me, it would be something that lets, if there's a consensus among the commissioners, to set a date where we could have that kind of a community conversation.
If the governing body would like, we could start with that and have him come forward now.
If I might make a comment, and I'm not opposed to all the hearing from Deputy Chief Morton today, or from the other people in attendance on this issue, I'm just thinking that from a public participation standpoint, it might be good to have it as an agenda item on an agenda that is pre-publicized, so that if there are others who might want to participate or listen to that discussion, be it through community access or in-person, that they could have a chance to do that rather than just do it kind of, I don't want to, ad-hoc's probably not the right word, but we need to do it in a publicized way. And like I say, I'm perfectly willing to listen to anything anybody has to say today on that issue, but would suggest that in any event, if we do that, that we follow up with a more publicized approach so that the participation can be more widespread, or at least if people want to listen, that they have the opportunity to prepare and to do that.
I agree. I'd kind of like to hear from the public, and then we can decide if we want to set up a special time. We may get some question or some information here that we can add to a prior meeting, so...
I might disagree slightly. I think we should complete the public opinion, but if the deputy chief is prepared even to say three minutes worth, I mean, we have interested people here. We could certainly do a more formal presentation with slides and everything.
Just to be clear, I'm not suggesting we don't do that today. I'm just suggesting that if we do that today, then we need to be prepared to kind of do a replay of that at some point, maybe in a week or two, in which we do approach it in a more publicly advertised fashion.
Agreed with that.
And in that regard, I just want to be clear, we've taken the liberty of adding a link to our homepage to the city's website. So there's already a discussion on our homepage about the eight policies that eight can't wait identifies and our policy on each. So I don't want to get ahead of anyone, but we went ahead and put that out there.
Thank you. Okay. Is anybody else that would like to approach the podium and speak, please?
Norman, man, Salina. This is a broad issue about racism, police conduct. This goes back a long time. This isn't going to go away easy. You research police conduct in states around the United States, this has happened twice in Minnesota, Wisconsin, twice in Texas, and these people were innocent. North Carolina, we've had police shootings of innocent people right here in Kansas. In Wichita, the man heard a commotion outside of his house. He stepped out of his house door to see what commotion was. Law enforcement shot him. There was no law issue with this man. Law enforcement were another distance away. In Hayes, law enforcement shot a young handicapped person. He never had a weapon. He was no threat to law enforcement. So I hope there's more talk, dialogue on this. New Mexico is another state. You can find this information online. Idaho, law enforcement called this man out there. Law enforcement called him out there. There was no warrant for this man. He hadn't committed any crime. He showed up as he was requested to do, and he went out there to do what needed to be done. His animal had been injured. He was to euthanize this animal. He was the animal that ended up being shot by law enforcement. I've got copies of this. So this isn't just a small problem, this local here in Kansas. This is all over the United States. Why are they doing this? So we need to address this more. So now that I've given you a bunch of you-know-what, I want to thank you guys for moving forward on this plastic bag issue. We're getting that done, so keep doing it.
Thank you, Norman. Are there others that'd like to address the commission?
Can anyone hear me? First of all, Dr. Davis, I wore this suit just for you.
Thank you.
Wanted to say, first of all, that I am Santiago Vazquez. I live here in Salina, and I believe that black lives need to matter more, not just on a national level, but I think Salina needs to reaffirm that message, not just in verbiage or in a proclamation, but also in its policy. One of the great concerns that I've had, especially listening to other city commissioners, Commissioner Skrye, good to see you again, and the police chief, is the way we've addressed this issue, right? So Minneapolis happened over 10 days ago, yet as far as I am concerned, Salina has not made itself known to have any policies in action yet, or any plan to move forward. You know, needless to say, nothing has been said yet, you know, nothing to address the issues, and I think that is a huge problem. I think that at this point, it's long overdue that the Salina City Commission releases statements saying, these are the plans we have moving forward, and, you know, not have our commissioners and our police department merely come out to say, everything is fine now. This is what we have now. Because if the problems exist now, then what we have now clearly isn't enough. You know, the can't wait eight argument, which I have heard many a times and I have familiarized myself with, is the most basic fundamental outline for what we should have. We don't get to pat ourselves on the back for having the can't wait eight. That is just the first, you know, stepping stone. There's a lot that needs to be fleshed out in that argument, a lot of accountability measures that need to be met, right? One thing that I heard two days ago, I believe, at the other protest organized by Tony Evans, was that our police department is accredited, and that is a good thing. And I, you know, spent about two minutes searching the internet to find other police departments that are accredited. Other police departments that are accredited are the ones in Topeka and the ones in Kansas City who committed violence against peaceful protesters. So clearly accreditation is not enough. I also heard the argument that we have body cams, and that is a good thing. But according to, and give me just a second to pull this up, the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences of the United States of America, body cams have a marginal at-best effect on stopping police violence. And we can look at empirical evidence for that as well. The fact that there were cameras all over the police officers who killed George Floyd, the fact there were police cameras and body cams on Philando Castile, and on so many others, means that police cameras are clearly not enough. The fact that the Salina Commission and the city of Salina has not made any announcements for what progress they have moving forward, I think is an egregious lack of action. And I'm sure that all of you are good people that are concerned, just as we are, and want to hear what we're saying. This is what we're saying. We need a clear action for what you're going to do moving forward, and we need it soon, so that we can pick it apart and criticize the heck out of it, to make sure that it is what the community wants, and to make sure that it is full proof, that it has no holes in it. Until then, we cannot feel comfortable, and we will not feel comfortable, with every single, you know, city commissioner coming out here being like, oh, these are the things that we already have, because we don't care what you already have. What we want is something better. And I think that needs to be the mission statement moving forward, is that we can always do better. Sitting here and relying on people becoming comfortable with what we already have simply is not going to cut it. And so in that sense, you know, I'm glad that you have all decided that we're going to continue with this meeting and have some more discussions, as well as having a future discussion, as Commissioner Franz was talking about. I'm glad that you're doing both. And if you haven't made that decision, that decision has just been made. So on that front, black lives matter. Black lives need to matter more, and Salina needs to make sure it's upholding that sentiment, needs to make sure that it is making advancements towards that goal, and needs to make sure that as soon as possible, they tell its public what they are doing to do that, or else people are going to feel very uncomfortable with the current administration. And you're going to be hearing back from us very, very soon on that front. And so seeing as I have, you know, 44 seconds left, I just want to hit home on the fact that I am here today because I simply had time. You know, the fact that there are maybe 10 people here today is because, you know, it's a little difficult sometimes to organize things very quickly, but that doesn't mean there isn't a lot more people who are concerned. In fact, in a recent, you know, just recently talking to some of my friends, I was able to gather over 40 people just on a, you know, just on a quick group chat, who said that we need to continue protesting to make sure that something happens. So it's a fair warning that people are concerned. There are many people who weren't able to show up today, but their voices will be heard. And so in that sense, I thank you for your time, and I hope that we hear a statement soon.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody?
I would just like to say that when you think of our graduating seniors from USD 305, that's who you need to think of. We produce very eloquent speakers, hard-working students, and future leaders that this city will be proud of. Thank you very much for coming.
Do we have other individuals?
My name is Teresa Hernandez, and I have served in the past on the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee here for the police and the sheriff's department. And I'm not sure that our public is well aware that we have this committee reviewing actions taken by our law enforcement officials. So I think that perhaps one of the ways to be able to bring the citizen complaint process more into the public awareness by making sure that there are statements made about it in the various media sources, perhaps making sure that it's posted not only on the police and the sheriff's homepages on the websites, perhaps also in the city of Salina website, and to encourage people that, or actually, not only to encourage people to use the means that are already available, but also to bring it more forefront into the awareness that we have had this in Salina. We have had this for Celine County. And if it has been underutilized, then perhaps that is the, not, it's the weakness that the city perhaps and the law enforcement offices perhaps have had, that it's been too weak for our citizens. So I think this would be an opportune time to be able to raise that awareness and make sure that if there are questions about law enforcement action that have an element of racial injustice, that that is raised, they know how to, citizens know how to make a complaint, and that it does come before the Citizen Advisory Committee to review those kinds of complaints against law enforcement. So I would like to encourage city officials to make that crystal clear and highlight that as something that Salina has already had previous to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I think there's a lot of individuals aren't aware of that, and we'll put that on our list of things to share with the general public. Thank you. Teresa?
Just one quick follow-up question. I don't know that it's for Ms. Hernandez or for Mr. Skrye. We had received an email earlier about the Law Enforcement Advisory Review Board. Where can a citizen go and get more information on that? Is that something that's on the Salina Police Department page, or is it on the county's page?
Yeah, I'm responding to that request in terms of the bylaws and the membership, but I don't know that it's on our website at the moment.
Okay.
Who is it? Sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
The information about the group is on the police department's website, on the city's website, so it is there. And information about when it was established, and some pamphlet, there's a pamphlet there, and also some information with regards to filing complaints. If you have a complaint against an officer or a certain situation, it's both in English and Spanish, that procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I see someone standing up back here, coming up.
My name is Kathleen Willow Lenders. I live here in Salina, and I own a business in downtown Salina. And I just want to add my voice to Black Lives Matters. I'm a professional downtown, and it just so happened that a patient canceled, so I was able to come here and add my voice. So as the young man said, there are people that aren't here. I wouldn't have been here if my patient hadn't canceled. So I want to say, I want to add my voice. I'm moved that a young man of color and a woman from Hispanic descent and a disabled woman have been the speakers at the microphone since I've been here. We do have a diverse community, and black lives do matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Miranda Bachman. I live here in Salina at 921 South Fifth Street. I'm here to say that I believe that black lives matter. I have very much been in this struggle since the death of Trayvon Martin in 2012. I would like to thank the commissioners, not only for showing up, but for also reaching out, Franz, Davis, and Hodges, for showing up, speaking out, and showing their support in Salina recently. I thank you for that. I'm looking forward to some serious action in the future, and I personally just want to let you all know that I am not going anywhere, and I don't plan on stopping until some things are really put into action. I'd really like to see some more community placements, you know, some more community help as far as outreach programs with the Salina Police Department, et cetera. So thank you for all showing up, and I'm excited for the future.
Thank you, Miranda. Anyone else?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alexandra Griffin. I live here in Salina, also on Fifth Street. Thank you all for being here today. I'll start by saying two things. I'll say her name, Breonna Taylor.
Breonna Taylor.
Black lives matter, and they need to matter more here in Salina. I have a few words to say. I would personally like to see the city council and its plans for the 2021 budget work to redirect funds from the $10 million police budget to community programs that increase the safety and well-being of all people, especially black and brown communities here in Salina. This would follow the lead of several other major cities. Minneapolis just yesterday voted to disband its police department. New York committed today for the first time for reducing funds for the NYPD and redirecting those to other community programs. The short of it is that I believe very strongly that the best path towards public safety is when all people have access to housing, and to food, education, and to vibrant social spaces. Those are huge things, and there's so much that goes in to those and that we work on here in Salina. So more conversation is needed there, of course. But the point I want to make is that the best path towards public safety is not towards further militarizing and expanding police departments and jails, which is what has been done in this country and what has been done here in Salina. And so I think that in this moment, the city council should be, as it has started to already, soliciting input, more input from community members, especially black and brown community members, about what resources they need to thrive here in Salina. This is what this moment demands of all of you and of us, if we're serious about fighting for racial justice and for black lives here in Salina. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Allison. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Piyush Lapsitwar. I live here in Salina, and I just want to add my voice to the voices before me saying black lives matter and we need to defend the police. And I say this in memory of Trayvon Martin and Tamir Rice. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Blanchard. I live at 250 South Ninth Street. I wear a lot of hats. One of them is former commissioner and former mayor. Another one is a subscribing Silver Life member of the Salina NAACP, a membership that I share with former Mayor Davis and many others. You know, a lot of people are new to this struggle, so to speak. Many have been here way too long. I'm not brand-new, but I'm new enough. And I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Franz and Melissa Hodges, for attending the NAACP prayer vigil and speaking to people at that event. I'd like to thank former mayor and Commissioner Davis for taking time out of your schedule while you're away, trying to help one of your kids move with a lot on your mind. I want to thank you for preparing a message to have delivered at that event. That event was very quickly organized by Sandra Beverley and Dee Williamson. And those that don't know Dee Williamson, she is the district superintendent for the Salina District in the United Methodist Church. She's an African-American woman. And they did a great job on that event. Eleanor Jones sang and spoke, and Dee told me that every pastor except one in her United Methodist group here in town showed up. One didn't. He had an injury, a back injury, and that was my pastor at Trinity United Methodist. And I've been a proud member there since about 1976. It is a very socially, a church that is very geared towards social justice. And although he wasn't there, I looked out in the audience, and I could see a lot of the members of my church there. It was noticeable of some of the members that I expected to be there that weren't, but we're here to thank those of you that did show up. The next day, at Miranda's No Justice Knows Peace March, again, the two commissioners showed up and marched and carried signs and babies and family members and everything else. And your presence was felt and appreciated. And Dr. Davis, you were there in spirit. I say all this because black lives matter. They matter because we have children, and we have friends that have children and grandchildren, and we have children that are, that whose spouses are black. And we are friends with those people, and we are support for those people. If we can't stand up for them, and we act like they don't matter, then what good are we? And when we're in positions of authority and leadership, I'll just say, why did I show up to those events? I showed up to the prayer vigil, not only because I'm the treasurer of the NAACP Salina Chapter, but I have countless friends that are African-American that have children in big cities across the country, many of which are just, were on fire. And I can only imagine what was going through their minds and how they felt about, are my children safe and will they be safe? I stand here, and I could read off names of victims all day and all night long. I want to say a few names of people that are close to me. Carl Beverley. Aaron Davis. Taylor Lee's Lies. Not sure how to pronounce that, but a good friend of mine's fiance. Rashawn Allen. My host kid from Kansas Wesleyan, who lives in Dallas, that I worry about this summer, Jordan Fawcett. I worry about Devon James, and I worry about James Curtis and their families. I worry about my friend Brandon Cheeks and his little kids. I want a better future for them. That's why I stand up and speak up for black lives. And we need to quit being afraid of what somebody's going to say about us if we don't show up and stand up and speak up. The time is now. I hope you rise to the occasion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Mendez, and I'm from Salina, Kansas. But I just want to voice up on the Black Lives Matter movement. I believe they do matter, and they need to matter more, because until they do, if they don't matter, then no lives matter, because it, no justice, no peace. We need to seek more attention to Black Lives Matter, because honestly, this whole country is just going downhill, and until then, we're not going to stop. But thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Hahn, and I am a resident of Salina, Kansas. And I just wanted to echo my friends that are here today in saying that black lives matter, and that needs to be reflected in everything that the Salina government and city council does, reflected in the policies and the way that people treat each other. I want to reiterate what Alex has said about moving funds from the Salina Police Department into more effective community support and empowerment programs. I believe that this is extremely crucial in protecting our communities, especially our brown and black communities here in Salina. So with that, I'll just say, black lives matter. Breonna Taylor's life matter. George Floyd's matter. So thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Abby. Anyone else? Mr. Morton, do you want to make any comments, or do you want to wait till we have an official?
If you want to, Sean, you can cover kind of the points that we talked about.
And again, this, you might state your name. You didn't this time, so everybody knows.
Sean Morton, and I'm the deputy chief of police here in Salina.
Actually, if I could jump in for just a second. For your benefit, we've done what I call a whiteboard exercise, but we spent some time kind of brainstorming the issues and concerns that we're hearing, the approaches that might address those. So we're working on kind of a more detailed inventory and response, but what I asked Mr. Morton to do today is be prepared if the questions arose about specifically eight can't wait. And so he spent the weekend kind of pulling together some of that information, so with that all.
Sure. So to just briefly touch on some of those, point number one is to exhaust all alternatives before shooting. And of course, in our policy, there's information with regards to de-escalation, what force options are available to a person. Those force options are not necessarily, when you're confronted with a lethal force situation, that you have to, you have to start with your fists, or you have to start with chemical. You can go to what is going to defend yourself against that particular lethal force weapon that's been, you know, you're being threatened with. So that is part of our existing policy, is part of existing training. That type of training exists clear from the time that an officer goes to basic training. And use-of-force training is done at our agency annually, and it's done on every piece of equipment that you issue to us, the city supplies to us. We do training on those particular items. I'll tell you that when I first started working at the Salina Police Department in 1991, they gave me, they gave me a pistol, and they gave me a set of handcuffs. So your options were pretty limited. You had your hands, and you had a pistol. Over time, the city has issued more items for us, intermediate items, to help control things without having to, you know, go to an extreme, that being, whether it be a chemical weapon, a mechanical weapon, a lot of different tools that can be used to be brought violent confrontations under control. And the second item is require all use-of-force to be reported. That's something that's also in our policy, and we've actually been doing that since the early 1990s. Found our use-of-force policy from 1996, and it contained where it was a requirement that use-of-force had to be reported. We go beyond that in the fact that we actually do a review that starts with the immediate supervisor to the officer that used force, or officers that used force. That immediate supervisor looks at the reports, looks at the video. The video is very valuable, and previously, prior to us having on officer video, you would have in-car video, or you would just have the reports. With on-officer video, there you are to review that video and essentially make an assessment on that report, and then it gets passed up to the next position, which is the captain over the division. He'll also review all the reports and all the documents associated with it, and then it's passed to me. I'll review it, review the reports, and then it's passed to Internal Affairs. They will do a review of the reports as well. And anytime along the way, if there is something that we see that we don't like, or we want some more information on, and this does happen from time to time, that we'll ask for it, so that we're satisfied as we're reviewing it, that our actions were proper. After Internal Affairs, then it goes to the chief for the final review. Number three is ban on chokeholds and strangleholds. That is specified specifically in our policy and has been so for the past five to seven years. I'm not exactly sure when we added it to it, but I know that it's been several years since that's been done. Establish a use-of-force continuum. That's something that is from the basics of going to an academy, is that you use the, you learn the use-of-force continuum. We have a use-of-force continuum. For my 29 years here, we've used a use-of-force continuum. Require de-escalation. This is specifically noted within our policy, that officers are to de-escalate a situation, not only as we're using force, but before we use force. Officers that go to the academy go to such topics such as behavior management, crisis intervention, interaction with special populations. We're in the process of teaching all of our officers crisis intervention team training. That's a 40-hour class, and it's only held certain dates throughout the year, and so we have to manage staffing in order to get them to, be able to get them scheduled for that training. It usually fills up pretty fast, but we are trying to work it through so that all of our officers have gone to that training. The next point is duty to intervene. Our policy specifically states, and it's conducted during Our policy specifically states, and it's conducted during training, that everybody at the scene of a use of force incident is responsible to control use of force if there's another officer that is using what is believed to be excessive force or not de-escalating the situation. Require warning before shooting is the last one. And the police department policy specifically states, and this has been in the policy since 1996, where foreseeable, the officer shall identify himself or give warnings of intent to use deadly force. I guess I did forget one. And it's a ban on shooting, moving vehicles. This is also in our policy and has been prohibited since 1996. It's not completely prohibited as there can be extenuating circumstances, but they must be dire that, that force could be used against a moving vehicle, but it would have to be the most extreme situations. That's pretty much just a assessment of going through the eight can't wait. There's other things that myself and the city manager and deputy city manager have been talking through today and over the weekend and over the past week. Mike, was there anything else that?
At this point, I don't think so. A couple of clarifications. You touched on the use of force continuum and that starts with verbal judo. I mean, to give you a perspective of the extent of the continuum. And then one thing that struck me, when we talk about use of force reporting and review of use of force, you might explain kind of what the threshold is for use of force and what gets reviewed and?
Well, essentially, in a use of force situation is if you combat or you're trying to complete an arrest and there's some sort of force used against you to defeat the arrest, then you're justified by state statute and other laws that you can use force, reasonable force, and that's the term, the main term that's used, reasonable force to take that individual into custody. And, and that's the threshold is reasonable force from the perspective of an officer of the information that they knew at the time that they acted. It's not 2020, meaning that people that are evaluating a use of force incident after the fact and there's information that wasn't available to the officer at the time they acted, they will not be judged by that information that they weren't aware of.
So one of the points that you made was if they unholster their weapon, that constitutes use of force that's reviewed as well?
Yeah, and not, not all agencies. If we, if we point a weapon at an individual and there's no other force that's used, for instance, in if there was a stolen vehicle, there's a procedure, that procedure's taught basically from the police academy is you conduct a high-risk vehicle stop. And that high-risk vehicle stop involves you getting out, being behind your doors, your weapons drawn, and you have the individuals in the vehicle exit the vehicle and come back to you. It's taught from essentially day one. There may be nothing else that occurred other than the pointing of the weapon in that situation, but we count that as a use of force and it goes into our reporting. There was no shot fired, there was no physical confrontation. But anytime we point a weapon, that a use of force report is completed and that information is forwarded through the chain of command all the way to the chief.
And then one last thing, and this one's more complicated than we might want to get into today, but access to the videos from the body cam are, that is regulated by state statute. Our policy mirrors the state statute. But there's a process for individuals that are subjects of that video as well as their heirs and representatives. And there's a whole list of individuals that are entitled to view that, that video, not just the police department. It is treated as criminal evidence and that's the statutory provision that we have to be mindful of. But there is a means for someone other than just internal police department review to get access to those videos and review them as well.
I was just going to ask, are there any, can you share any key points, any summary from the discussions that you had with people at the, at the Saturday rally? Or is that something that you could incorporate when we do have a more publicized, extended version?
Well, in all honesty, so far, those conversations have really been about the need for continued dialogue. My acknowledgement that, you know, I need to listen more than talk and a desire to find an avenue and the right people to be in that conversation and me providing my contact information and saying, I'd like your help to get that started. Beyond that, a number of people made very salient points as part of that presentation, some of them that resonated with me and some that I had kind of identified previously. But those are all things to build on. Everything from education and what goes on our school system to poverty and housing, things much, much broader than, than just the policies we're talking about here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Tamara McArath and I'm a resident from, resident of Salina. And I wasn't going to say anything at all. I don't mean to get, excuse me if I get emotional. But of course, black lives do matter because I'm, I'm black, so my life definitely matters. I just think it's awesome the, for everyone to come up and speak. What I've, I myself have witnessed forms of harassment since I've been here. And, well, what I've noticed is that what a lot of people have that are doing this just because you have, if you're not an upstanding black citizen of Salina or of America, then you're looked down differently. And so that makes it okay for you to be harassed or, you know, it doesn't matter, and it really doesn't matter if you are, you know, live in this part of town or if you live in that part of town, your life still matters. And so I just want to say, and I never even, and the thing about it is with me is I never even saw color until probably my late twenties, early, mid twenties is when I actually saw color. And then when I actually experienced racism and even hear about it now, it baffles me because I don't under, it just doesn't make sense to me because I wasn't raised that way at all. My family, I have biracial nieces and nephews, and so any of, none of that makes sense to me. And I just hope that, and it's awesome that you guys are here listening and, but I, I hope that, and a lot of people, they, it doesn't really affect them and so they don't really do anything about it. They just, you know, it is what it is, those are those protesters or they're just upset. And if they would just get their life together, they wouldn't have to worry about it. Or if they weren't doing this, then they wouldn't have to even worry about the police anyway. But that's not, that, in some cases, it doesn't even matter. And I've experienced, you know, if you can have policies, you know, set, but are they actually being followed? Because not all of them are being followed. And I've, I've heard his, the policies that the Salina Police Department has, and they're not all followed. And a lot of them is not followed because people do not know their rights. And so, and, and people know that, well, you don't know your rights, so I'm going to abuse my rights. I'm going to abuse the authority that I have. And so my hope and prayer is that you guys aren't here just because it looks good, but because you actually care and you want something to change. So again, black lives matter. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tamara. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Eddie Cherimol and I live here in Salina. And I want to lend my voice to support Black Lives Matter movement. And I also want to ask a question to, I guess, the chief. And you mentioned that use of violence must be reported and it goes up the chain. But what if that system is broken? Because we know that in some places, officers that have been accused of excessive force repeatedly over many years can still remain under force. And so clearly here's, at those locations, something went wrong. And I'm wondering whether we should, whether it would be useful to make those use of force reports accessible to the public? Because we are directly in the line of fire for any officer that decides to go AWOL. And so would it be useful as a way to keep the system accountable for people to be able to see those reports? And also, I want to say that I don't know if many people knows how it feels to be, I guess, a black person in, against America. I think about my actions all the time. But if I'm, if I'm working alone somewhere, I think like any little actions that may be construed in a bad way, I think about that all the time. And that's unhealthy. And so, anyway, I just want to say that our lives matter and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Eddie.
If I could, I'd like to acknowledge his point, which is a really good one. And that is, you know, the, the extent of accountability there. We can talk about the duty to intervene and if you look at the George Floyd incident, we're starting to learn that two officers tried to intervene, but there is culture, there is peer pressure, there is all of that. And so as we look at our policies, we look at the law enforcement advisory board, as we look at the complaint procedure, I think that is a focal point is opportunity for accountability and reporting and outside review. There's a number of things that we have in place in the way of policies where certain things occur, we bring in outside agencies, whether that's the KBI or another agency. But that is, that is a focal point that we've already talked about and I think he raises a very good point.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. And it looks like we'll be scheduling some public meetings for everyone to attend and we'll make sure that we get agendas and times sent out to everybody so we can not only have you attend, but, but other individuals from the community. And we'll probably try to have some of those at different times. So depending on work shifts and stuff, we can have people from different times of ten. So, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Cheryl Mermes, deputy city clerk. Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 1, 2020.
We have one thing on the consent agenda, that is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of June 1, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve consent agenda 6.1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will tell those individuals, if you've not been to a city commission meeting before, if you really want to stay, you're more than welcome. But if you have something else to do, you can, you're, you can leave also. We won't be offended. Okay, thank you. Okay, that leads us into administration. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 20-11032, terminating the Lambert's Edition Coal Tax Increment Financing Project Redevelopment District.
Okay, this was, Mike, do you have any comments? I don't, we had any?
Actually, I think Ms. Pack has prepared that.
I was looking for.
She's not in the corner, sorry.
Shandy's not in the room, so.
Director of Finance. I did want to mention that we have made two changes to the ordinance since we presented it at first reading. The first change was to add the summary that can, that could be published. That portion was left out of the original ordinance. And also, we added the introduced in past dates on the, on the second page to show that we read the first reading on June 1 and that this would be the second reading today.
Okay, any questions for staff? Is there any public comment to be made at this time? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we pass ordinance number 20-11032 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the approval of ordinance number 20-11032. We will ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Okay, that leads us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, consideration of change to the special alcohol funding allocation for the remainder of the two-year period, 2019 through 2020.
Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Per state statute, the state collects a 10% sales tax on drinks that are sold by clubs and caterers and other drinking establishments. And under that statute, that tax, part of that tax comes back to the city and part, and it is split three day, three ways. A third to the general fund, a third to special parks and recreation, and one-third to a special alcohol fund. In that special alcohol fund, there are specific uses for that, which include the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism or drug abuse prevention and education, alcohol and drug detoxification, intervention in alcohol and drug abuse, or treatment of persons who are alcoholics or drug abusers or in danger of becoming alcoholics or drug abusers. In order to allocate this money to participants throughout the community, we do an RFP at the beginning of the two-year cycle. We did one back in the beginning of 2019 and we had three respondents at that time. Central Kansas Foundation, St. Francis Community Service, and Ashby House. On April 8, 2019, city commission approved an allocation that, to allot $200,000 to Central Kansas Foundation, $147,590 to St. Francis Community Service. And once that amount was reached, you allowed that Ashby House would be allowed to be allocated $120,000 if funds were available. We recently received a request from Central Kansas Foundation and from Ashby House to reassign the funding approved for Ashby House to Central Kansas Foundation for the remainder of the 2019-2020 request period. Shane Hudson from Central Foundation stated within a letter to the city that Ashby House would no longer be providing these services and that Central Kansas Foundation would be providing the services at Ashby House for them. The total amount of the funds is unknown at this time, but we have allocated to date We have remaining funds, including the funds that would go to Ashby House of about $187,671. There are three, three distributions left in the cycle. So we would anticipate that we would meet the, the base funding for Central Kansas Foundation and St. Francis before the end of the funding cycle. There's no fiscal impact on the city of Salina because this is just a redistribution of the alcohol taxes received from the state. In your package, we did receive letters from both Ashby House and from CKF. And Mr. Hudson and Mr. Holtberg are both here if you have questions for them as far as how this all came about. They did create a partnership that, that they would, Central Kansas Foundation would provide these services at Ashby House for them. Staff has identified the following allocation options for city commission approval. One is to approve the reassignment of special alcohol funds for the 2019-2020 funding cycle for Ashby House to Central Kansas Foundation. Second is to approve the reassignment with amendments as you deem appropriate. The third is postpone consideration of reassignment of the funds at a specific date and. The third is postpone consideration of reassignment of the funds at a specific date and time and provide staff with further direction. Or four is not to re-sign the special alcohol funds for this cycle, which would leave the funds in the city's position, possession to be, be distributed during the next funding cycle. I'm available for questions, and also, so as I said, Mr. Hudson and Mr. Holtberg are also available for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Pack?
Just one, were all of the funds that were going to be distributed to Ashby House for addiction services, or were there any other services that were being provided in their request?
Any of the funds that we would be providing under this have to follow under that statutory requirement. And so, that would be the, the only reason they would be getting those funds, and those are the services that they're not performing at this time.
And I have one question, but I don't believe it's probably for you, it's probably for Shane. Did I read where there was additional staff that's been hired by CKF to? Yeah, please come on, Shane. Might state your name for the audience?
Yes, Shane Hudson, CEO of CKF Addiction Treatment, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So, your question about new staff coming on?
Now that you're taking over the, some, for Ashby House, this program, has additional staff been hired?
Yes, so we worked to increase capacity. Once the partnership formed, Andy had an idea for us both to operate, I guess, through our best capabilities and services as two agencies to come together and offer great services to women with children through Ashby. So, we brought on two counselors from Ashby House and one peer mentor, and we pay per day for each woman living at the house so that additional services occur, such as case management, there's security onsite, there's childcare, there's other services that Ashby House performs. So, we're purchasing the space within Ashby House and those services provided through the women who are staying there and the services we're providing and billing for.
I just wanted to hear an explanation.
Yeah, and I would say otherwise, just additional information. And Andy, I can't remember how many women were staying there when we first started, it might have been nine when we first started. We've had an average of 15 patients there per day, per month. We've been as high as 16, there were some rooms being renovated. The maximum is 25, so women plus women with children, and we've served 59 unique patients since mid-February when we started. So, it's going very well. We also just got certified to provide Senate Bill 123-funded services there so that more referrals through criminal justice system can come and get services at Ashby. It's five days per week counseling services, plus peer mentor services while they're living at Ashby.
I'm glad to see you're combining services, I think that sounds like a great idea, so thank you.
So, but you just prompted a question for me. Senate Bill 123 would be what?
Senate Bill 123 is through the Kansas Sentencing Commission. So, those with certain drug charges will go through Senate Bill funding, and they're actually able to access treatment services with that funding.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Yeah, okay.
Just wanna reiterate what Shane said, this has been an incredible collaboration, and what we realize is that we're both able to kind of focus our, you know, our specialty and our, our, you know, expertise in housing and case management and life skills on the Ashby House side, and they can do treatment on the CKF side, and it's a, just a really great marriage. And so, we've seen just incredible results, results already. Several single mothers are able to get custody of their children back. We are seeing just such a great, it's just a great opportunity. So, I just wanted to say, you know, on our side, so, just speak on behalf of CKF and their professionalism, and, and thank you for considering this.
Just for the audience, you might give us your name and, and your title.
Andy, and I'm the Executive Director at Ashby House, Andy Holtberg, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Any other comments? With that, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve the change of special alcohol funding allocation for the remainder of the two-year period, 2019-2020.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the reassignment of special alcohol funds for 2019 and 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and good luck. Okay, with that, that moves us into Development Business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider acceptance of proposed easement and restricted access dedications on the proposed final plat of the Southgate Plaza Edition located on the west side of South Ohio Street between Albert Avenue and Buckeye Avenue.
Okay, I am going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Hodges. I have a conflict, I have an order outstanding on this, so I'm gonna recuse myself and step out of the room at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Hoppick, and bear with me, all of you. Dean, I'll turn it over to you.
Dean Andrew, Planning and Zoning Administrator. What's coming for you this evening is consideration of whether you wish to accept the proposed easement and restricted access dedications on a proposed final plat of the Southgate Plaza Edition. The property we're discussing is a 5.3-acre tract that's located on the west side of South Ohio Street between Albert Avenue and Buckeye Avenue. It's more commonly referred to as the Southgate Shopping Center. And the addition that we're talking about dates back to 1958. The Shalimar Plaza Edition occupies both the east and west sides of South Ohio Street. And initially, Dillons had purchased the property, and then they subsequently sold it, and a shopping center developer actually constructed the main building that's there in 1970 with Dillons as a tenant instead of as an owner. And then in 1972, there was a Straw Hat Pizza Restaurant that was built in the southeast corner of the site. Dillons occupied the property, and in 2003, did substantial renovations to the property, and that resulted in the corner parking lot at Lewis and Albert being rezoned to a shopping center designation. The replat that is before you is a result of Dillons relocating to a new store at 1235 East Cloud, and so the current owner is proposing to subdivide Lot 7 into three separate ownership tracts that can be sold off to individual entities. So, there is the Planet Fitness space, the Speakeasies space, and a future buyer of the southern portion of the shopping center building. And the plan is to create a condominium-type arrangement whereby individual entities would own the buildings, and then there would be a fourth lot created. That fourth lot would serve as common area for the use and benefit of the other three building owners. So, in a lot of cases, with restaurants or shops, the restaurant or shop will own the building, and then they'll own the parking lot in front of the building. In this case, the parking lot is gonna be shared common area amongst all the uses. And so, there's a proposed Lot 1, that would be the common area. Proposed Lot 2, on the drawing there, is the space that's currently occupied by Planet Fitness. Proposed Lot 3 is the southern portion or the remainder of the shopping center building, and then proposed Lot 4 is the space currently occupied by Speakeasies. And all of these lots have frontage on a public street, except for Lot 3, the southern portion of the shopping center building, and because there is common parking and access area between it and Buckeye Avenue, the applicant has requested a variation of the frontage requirement for that lot. As far as the dedications that are being proposed on this replat, all the right-of-way for Buckeye and Albert in Ohio are in place, there's no additional dedications. Originally, in 1958, the standard for utility easements was 14 feet. The new standard is 20 feet, and so the applicant has widened the rear utility easement to 20 feet where it can be widened. There are two access easements for the north-south drives that connect Albert with Buckeye. And then, staff has requested, and the owner has provided restricted access markings along South Ohio Street and Albert Avenue, except for the existing openings. So, that means that any additional curb cuts that might be requested on Ohio or on Albert Avenue would have to be approved separately by the City Commission at a future date. This replat was considered and reviewed by the Planning Commission at their May 19 meeting. They voted to approve the replat, including the requested variation from the street frontage requirement for Lot 3. And their findings in, in support of that are provided on Page 4 and 5 of your report. So, the consideration for this evening is, staff would recommend that the City Commission approve a motion accepting the offered easement and restricted access dedications and authorizing the mayor to sign the plat of the Southgate Plaza Edition. So, the plan is that the, the replat would be, all the signatures would be in place, then there would be the plat recorded, and then there would be a set of declarations that would go with the plat that would address the ongoing maintenance and use of those common areas. And so, with that, I'd be open to any technical questions you have, the applicant's representative, Mr. Jeff Mays, is here if you have questions about the concept.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do any of the commissioners have questions of staff?
If I might. Lot 1 shows as a split lot, part of it's in front of the building and part of it is behind because that's the, the parking area that sits there behind now.
Yeah, it's actually, I would describe it as a U-shaped building, it wraps all the way around, it's east, it's south, and it's west. So, if you drove by there today, all the places that are currently marked with parking stalls, that would be common area for the use.
Designated as Lot 1.
So, instead of saying, these spaces are for this space, and these are for Speakeasy, they're available to all users.
Okay, and the proposed Lot 2 and Lot 3, which is the old, what I would call the Dillons building, are, are going to be able to be sold off separately, I presume.
Yes.
Has the water and wastewater services been split? So, they have two individual services instead of sharing a common service?
At the time that Planet Fitness moved into that property, we created two separate buildings and two separate accounts. The north building is 2012, South Ohio, the south building is 2020. And actually, Key Rexall at one point had a third service at 2024.
So, we're not looking at a situation where down the road somewhere, we'd end up with two individual ownerships on one service, which can create some issues. Final question, and it's, what we're doing here today is we're actually approving or accepting the easements and other dedications.
Correct.
Okay. What, what happens if we don't do that?
If you decline to accept the dedications, you would need to make a statement as to why you don't think it's in the public interest to accept the dedications. And then, the, a, the Planning Commission approves or disapproves plats, but plats cannot be recorded without the endorsement of the City Commission and the mayor. So, if you decline to accept the dedications, then the plat could not be recorded.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this issue? I see Mr. Mays in the audience, I don't know if you would like to speak to?
I'm happy to stand for questions if you have any, otherwise you don't wanna waste your time.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Mays? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments or action.
Mayor, I move that we recommend that the City Commission approve a motion accepting the offered easement and restricted access dedications and authorizing the mayor to sign the plat of the Southgate Plaza Edition on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Would somebody recall Mayor Hoppick? And we'll give him a moment.
Vice Mayor Hodges, you might want to reconsider your, your verbiage on that. I'm, I'm not sure that recall is the best word to use in these circumstances. I'm trying to be kind of.
Okay. Yeah, don't throw me off with, with snark right now, this is a.
Okay, I guess, we, I guess, before we go into executive session, do we have any other business to come before the commission? Okay, if not, we'll move to 9.1.
Item 9.1, request for executive session, trade secrets.
Okay, how long do we need?
I think we can do this in 10 minutes.
Well, I'm good, we'll see. I like that.
Call me skeptical.
Are we gonna go into the other room?
Well, given the chair configuration in there, I thought we'd go into 1:05.
1:05, okay, that's what we need to make sure. Okay, somebody have the?
Mayor Hoppick, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the subject of a specific economic development prospect based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:37.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to remove any executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll be back in here in some minutes. Okay, we're back in session, and we have no further business. So, with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll see everyone next Monday. Thank you.
Dr. Trent, you got your picture on the wall over there.
Yeah.